Yeah, how do I know that there are multiple of them?
Can't hear.
No respect at all.
You guys are having too much fun over there.
They're finding over space. It was yesterday's.
Sure, yes. Anything else?
I went past Senator. It was great, and Sunday.
The planning commission on order. They're done. Jenny, would you take the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Or Commission Member Swados.
Here.
Commission Member McKenzie.
Here.
Commission Member Rorschach, here. Commission Member Pollak.
Here.
Commissioner Nelson.
Here.
Member Manik.
Here.
Commissioner Cool.
Here.
Are there any communications or interpretations for the planning?
Not at this moment, thank you, Chair.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes last meeting? So, support. Please, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gary. Our first case today is KGM Contractors. And Mark, you're presenting?
Yes.
Okay, you may proceed.
Question this morning is from KGM Contractors. Their request is to open up a general purpose borrow pit to a freshing, screening, washing, portable hot mix, recycling asphalt. The applicant is proposing standards hours of operation from seven to eight, Monday through Saturday, an estimated six to eight trucks will be leaving the site per day. The extractive use will not exceed fifteen acres. Next slide, show the approximate location and zoning. Next slide is the location map off of one sixty-nine and Hill the Road. Next one is the actual site map showing the parcel. And then the location of where the proposed borrow pit would be located. The next one shows the proposed haul road, which received an easement from the landowner to gain access to the pit. Next one is their site map showing the area where they intend to excavate along with the buffers and the location of the estimated removal. These are pictures off of Hill the Road looking north and south on one sixty-nine. This is Hill the Road looking east back towards the location of the borrow pit. As we get further down, I'm looking back west on Hill the Road where Hill the Road kind of ends and the easement road starts. So, because of the snow, we've been getting into the site, so that's kind of the location. Plans and official controls, zoning order sixty-two, Article five, section five point six B indicates general purpose borrow pits aren't allowed use with a conditional use permit. The applicant's parcel is designated as FA within the planning area two on the future land use map. St. Louis County Council has a land use plan under objective four point five states that development of new general purpose borrow pits should be directed through areas designated as forest and agricultural FA on the future land use map, which is one of the areas. The FA category typically consists of large tracts of land that are intended for future urban or rural development. Neighbor availability, the area consists primarily of large tracts of undeveloped forest land and agricultural land. These large tracts of land are under both private and public ownership. The surrounding area is owned multiple use four, fam three, and fam one. Development density in the area is very low with only a few residences. There are no dwellings on the applicant's parcel. The nearest residential dwelling is a hundred feet from the haul road and twelve hundred feet from the pit location. There is an existing general purpose borrow pit on Hill the Road within a half a mile. The applicant is proposing to use the same county road to access the parcel where the borrow pit is located. For the development, this is a rural area consisting primarily of large undeveloped parcels. The request for borrow pit should have little to no effect on the future development of the surrounding area, and the proposed use is not new to the area as there is an existing general purpose borrow pit located within a half a mile. Desire pattern of development, again, there is not a high level of future growth anticipated in this area. The FA designation of the parcel specifically identifies these areas for extractive uses, and the area is not intended for future urban or rural development. Other factors, keep in mind here, the applicant has obtained legal access to the property, and the total pit area to be excavated is fifteen acres. Next one is the criteria for the planning commission to review when discussing this case. And a recommendation here, if the firm's proposal meets the criteria for granting conditional use approval, condition present, the applicant shall obtain access approved from the appropriate road authority. A wetland delineation should be completed, and conditions concurrent, all minimum extractive use standards shall be followed, the extractive use shall be limited to less than forty acres, and all local, county, state, federal regulations shall be followed, and the Wetland Conservation Act shall be followed. Didn't receive any correspondence on this one. I hope it up for any questions that you guys have.
Any questions? Go ahead, Ray.
The area all photo, that looked like a lot of the area's already been cleared?
Yeah, it was logged in that area. It looks like it must have been the previous owner had it logged off, and it's just opened, but there's no excavation on that site. There's a small excavation on the opposite parcel from the landowner that owns that parcel. I did have one mark.
Yeah. So, with the fifteen acres, you got any other factors? That's just basically because it's under forty, it wouldn't matter if that's fifteen, twenty-two, twenty-four acres, there's no.
No, it's just that on their application, they said fifteen, because that's pretty much all the upland on the property, everything else is wetland. So, they just stated that, you know, it's fifteen acres, just to know that if they decided to excavate beyond that, there's going to be other, I know, applications like the Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act and stuff would have to be dealt with on that.
Any other questions, Mark?
Are there any government agencies present that wish to comment on this proposal?
Hearing done. It's the applicant's turn to present. We have someone here from KGM.
Yeah, I'm here. Come on up, and would please take your name and tell us what you know about this proposal. He's line with KGM Contractors. We're a heavy highway contractor in the area, and we're looking to have a resource in this area for upcoming future projects, so. Borrow pit permit in that area.
Question, is it a misprint or what? You said you have a hot mix, you have a possibility of having a hot mix plant in there.
Yeah, yeah, we own a portable hot mix plant, yep, so.
Would you be operating it in that pit or storing it in that pit?
We would be operating it if the projects come up that need that.
Yes, but that's my next question. Six to eight trucks, you're going to need a lot more trucks if you're running it that way.
Yeah, six to eight, I guess, is kind of an average of, you know, if we're in there like that pit, we may be in there one year, we may not be in there for a year or two later, depending on the projects in the area, so.
Any idea what the high end would be for a daily?
Oh, probably high end dozen, maybe a little bit more, fifteen-ish, I guess, it depends on where the.
It doesn't make any difference in the application, I just.
Yeah, it depends on where the whole project is that we're actually constructing, so.
Thank you.
I did have a question, too. Are the recycled products will be brought to the site? So, if you're bringing in asphalt or recycling, do you store it there for a good long time or do you just bring it in there to use it to mix with crushing gravel or?
Yeah, so we'll use the asphalt to crush with gravel to make a road base, and we'll also use that recycled asphalt to go into the asphalt plant to recycle it into the petunias as well.
If you bring recycled asphalt in, is there time frame? Could it sit there for years or is there a time for how long?
Yeah, we've got other pits that have asphalt, reclaimed asphalt in the pits currently. It could sit there for a while. It's a valuable product to us so that, you know, it gets recycled and it gets used more often now than it did years ago.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I have a question. Have you heard or spoken to any of the neighbors?
There is a neighbor to the east of us, I think his last name is Poli. We talked to him regarding the buffer, and he sent a correspondence, I think, into the county stating he would allow us to excavate up to, through the buffer, up to his property line. That's the only one that I know. Yes.
And I'm predicting, I know there's a question coming about the road into there. And is it your intent to upgrade portions of that road? In particular, there's a culvert in some areas that folks aren't thinking is really something that's suitable for what you're going to be doing.
Yeah.
Part of the plan?
We could look at that, yeah, definitely, and see what is needed, if it's going to handle our equipment or how that's going to work, I guess.
So, you would be upgrading the road to?
Yeah, if the road needs it for our trucking, we definitely would have to upgrade the road so that we can, we're going to want to get in and out of there just as much as the locals need to get in and out of there as well, so we can upgrade it to be able to handle our trucks.
So, yes.
Thank you. People, any questions for applicants? Thank you. Jenny, are there any callers online?
I don't believe so. Mr. Poya that was mentioned, is online, we could ask if he wants to talk, he doesn't have his hand raised.
Yes, please.
Angie, can you unmute Mr. Poya? Angie? Angie, can you hear me?
Hear you, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, thank you. Do you have any testimony to provide for this case?
I do not have any additional comments at this point. I did send a notice that I would have baked the fifty-foot easement on my property line. Other than that, that's all I'm, that's all I need to share right now, I guess.
Thank you. It does look like, it does look like there's a Roger Anderson that would also have to ask a question. Angie, can you unmute Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson, you're unmuted.
Yep, and I have a question about the road, so Reps Road that would lead to Black Bay Road where you're accessing.
Ma'am, ma'am?
Yeah.
You're not on the right hearing, this is a hearing for KGM for a gravel pit in on Hill the Road.
Okay.
We'll get to that hearing later on in the proceedings.
Thank you.
I don't believe that there's anyone else on for this hearing that I can see, Chair, you can see.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against the proposal?
I have a neutral attitude.
Yes, sir, go ahead. And could you stand up, please, and tell us your name?
So, I own the property eighty acres to the north and then forty acres to the west, so where the road goes into the property. I was just curious, was there legal easement on record through that first forty? Was that already designated where that path was going to be?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
So, the easement on the map right here, was this easement drawn legally and illegal on the easement when it was purchased, you know, for sure?
Mark, do you have an answer to that question?
I would ask the applicant, I mean, we have easement language, I would, you know, I would actually, you know, just survey it in and everything, I guess I would leave that up to the owner of the pit to provide that information. But we do have a legal document that they have legal access, easement into the property.
So, I know they have legal access, but it wasn't determined where it was going?
Yeah, I'd have to look back at the deed on that, on the legal access, to see exactly if there, if it's just intacted exactly.
Yeah, because this one right here, this is my land here and here, and my camper's currently parked there, so I didn't know if there was a way to move that once you get across the beater pond, turning right instead of going right past all my access.
I guess I assume that it's probably following if there's existing road there, existing access there, that's, I would assume they probably drew it up as such, I don't know.
I talked to the previous owner, I bought the property, he said there was nothing drawn up on the easement on the actual purchase. That's the question I had, is if any way to move that or way to make it, you know, we can talk outside, too.
Yeah, we can talk about that, I'll get your name and number, and we can take a look at that.
Okay.
Sir, could I get your name and address for the record, please?
Ryan Denzel. I don't have personal address for that, and Hill the Road.
And your mailing address?
Thirty-eight, thirty-one, Highway seven, Iron, Minnesota, five five seven by one.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would speak regarding the proposal? Is there anyone else in the commission that have a question for the applicant before I close the hearing? The hearing is closed, and we put discussion, or are we ready to do, entertain this all?
Chair McKenzie, I guess if there's no discussion, I'd make a motion to grant a conditional use permit to KGM Contractors for a general purpose borrow pit as an extractive class two. The applicant gives his book of crushing, screening, washing, portable hot mix, recycling asphalt, and come based on staff's facts and findings. And our other factors, planning commission criteria for approval of conditional use permit, number one, does the use conform to the land use plan? Yes, our plans and controls, zoning order sixty-two, Article five, indicates general purpose borrow pits aren't allowed use with conditional use permit. Number two, is the use compatible with the existing neighborhood? Yes, the area consists of primarily large tracts of undeveloped, they have A land, and the density of the area is very low, with few residents. Some peed normal and orderly development, and improvement of its founding. It's primarily large undeveloped parcels that have no effect on the future development of this area. And there is an existing borrow pit within a half mile of that. Number four is the location and character of the proposals considered consistent with desirable pattern of development.
Yes, the FA designation of the parcel specifically identifies that these areas were extractive use. But if any fact, other factors should be taken into consideration on this case, the total area of the pit to be excavated is fifteen acres. The applicant has indicated that he has legal access to the property, and the recommended conditions, the two conditions precedent, and the four conditions.
Go ahead, Ray. Second, if I may. Any further discussion? Jenny, would you take the roll, please?
Chair, one quick comment, I guess. I would be concerned about that access road and how it might impact other landowners in the area, but I know KGM's reputation, and I know they work with everybody, so I don't have any concerns about it just because I know they'll take care of the neighborhood in and out, that's been that way ever since I've been here.
Thank you. Jenny, go ahead.
Commission Member Swados?
Support.
Chair McKenzie?
Support.
Commission Member Rorschach?
Support.
Commissioner, 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 Commissioner Pollak?
Support.
Commissioner Nelson?
Support.
Commissioner Manik?
Support.
Commissioner Cool?
Support.
And do you have a few minutes until the next hearing is to begin at nine thirty? If I may take a moment, I did forget, I wanted to introduce one of our newer planners here in the back, this is Paul Butler. Paul comes to us with a very vast background in natural resources, and he's worked for a number of government agencies in the past, has a lot of wetland experience, so I just wanted to introduce Paul. He may be in front of you in the near future presenting cases, been with us since January of this year, and is doing an excellent job, so just wanted to make you all aware that there's Paul.
Welcome, Paul.
Welcome, Paul.
I don't wait. We can start late or we can start early. Ten minutes, nine minutes.
Did you ice squat fingers? Bet you're looking, is it looking great?
Mark, it looked gray one day, like, we're saying, the sweetest word, like, lake of the woods, there was water.
Yeah. Well, it's not good that the water left, because once the water needs it, it's all, but then it's blocked like a creek, so it'll probably be another two weeks.
It used to be a sweet pool, but never learned off later that it just went. Since I've been off here, eighty-four, twice.
Yeah, that matched this one, I think, that was very long, so that was, you know, five years ago, when it was really late, it's the late evening. You had those highs and seventy-degree weather, and it was, I was up fishing on Lake of the Woods, and then I was fishing in seventy-degree weather on days, and I came back and the kids rode and tried to swim, skiing, and when they were coming down the hill, there was a lake at the bottom, and you would skip across and get in. Yeah. When we were on Lake of the Woods, it was a standard auger that would touch the top when I got in. They didn't have the ice that you need to have, because it was not that.
Really? And I don't know if it's good ice or bad ice on rainy or on, I know on state roads it was bad, bad ice, you get six, eight inches. You get six, eight inches. My gall and the rest is done.
Yeah, plus you got that, it'd be snow right away in the spring, I think, definitely much.
That's what it, that's what did it back there.
One thing it did is it kept, some of these lakes kept the crop off.
It did.
And plowing roads and stuff, so it probably. A little there next time I round on that, I think anybody just had a form of there. I just don't know if I also drive some of them.
It's that car, I'm scared, see, when you're going at three o'clock in the morning, you wake in the summer, they gotta be Barbie-ish.
Yeah.
Got his car on, oh, I agree, most of the ice. I don't know, I've got much ice there. Oh, it's. So if you think like, we can slide, you know, like you're saying.
But yeah.
So did you go up there?
Well, I was reading this, so you made all that ice, ready, so you have. Yeah.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. Except, yeah, the exception of her she had. Well, you know, what happened? Those things pass, but she started. Brain, so like everything. So then if we use it for brainstorming, it's not all packed up. Sometimes it takes, oh, okay. Oh. Yeah. She did all of her. And then it's. It's.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Keep buying.
Same.
She even.
Waited. What did we say? Separated. Oh, yeah.
One minute, Chair.
Yes. You know, call meeting back to order. I want to address the audience, when you came in, you were provided a copy of our public hearing process sheet, a lot of the sign-up sheet. And I just want to reiterate some of these things, perhaps fill in some of the details. But we will give everybody that which to speak, the opportunity to speak. And I just want to make sure that in these cases of higher interest that we all have the opportunity. I have the sign-up sheet and I'll call you with order when we get to that point. And I'm going to limit your testimony to three minutes. Jenny is gonna run a timer for me during this. Obviously, we have our staff presentation and questions for the, for the staff person from the commission. After that, the applicant has a chance to speak, explain the application. You have questions, the applicant perhaps, and we'll open it up essentially for, to the public. We're first ask for people who are in favor and then ask for people who are against. And that's when the sign-up sheet will come into play. Uh, we want to make sure that we address or any comments or questions are addressed to the board or the commission rather than individual. Uh, any, any individual on the commission. And, and at last, or finally, we want to make sure that our hearing is civil and ordered. We are courteous to people, we expect the same when we heard. And lastly, I want to emphasize that us planning commission members, with the exception of Commissioner Nelson, are citizen volunteers, they are not coming employees, we are not, not paid to be here. So with that, you can, you're the presenter today, Mark?
Yes. Okay, we have a request from LTI Holdings. It's like it goes to sleep. There. LTI is requesting approval for an expansion of an existing extractive use class two to include recycling of concrete and the tuminous. Uh, the existing extractive use was approved by Friedenberg Township. Uh, the approved use was for general purpose borrow pit, which included excavation, crushing, hauling of aggregate material. Um, the application, application that was submitted for the original proposal did not include recycling of concrete and the tuminous. Um, the applicant is proposing the hours of operation to remain consistent with the extractive use hours of operation. Um, we noticed this when we did a site review of the borrow pit and noticed that they had concrete and asphalt and informed them that there wasn't a previous approval for that. So if they wanted to continue using it, they would either have to remove it or apply for an expansion. The next one here is the outline of the property for the zoning map. Next one is the location map showing the property boundary. The next one is the location of where the asphalt and concrete is located at this time. The next slide shows a picture of their access to Levate Road. And then looking south and north on Levate Road, the access. Next one would be driving in, again, this was three weeks ago when we actually had snow. So you can kind of look back and you can kind of see some of the, the existing excavation that's occurring in the pit. So if we go to staff findings in fact, zoning orders sixty-two, Article five, section five point six B indicates general purpose borrow pits are not allowed use for the conditional use permit. The proposal site falls within the lake shore development area of St. Louis County compared to land use plan. This area is intended for rural development next to lake, including infill, new and redevelopment of residential properties as well as commercial and mixed uses that are allowed within the zone district. The proposed request is to expand an existing commercial extractive use. Neighborhood badability, there are approximately thirty residential properties within a quarter mile. The nearest residential dwelling is located approximately five hundred feet from the extractive use. The area consists of both large and small tracts of forested and residential development. Shoreland development exists to the north approximately twelve hundred feet from the current extractive use. Early development due to the zone district in the area and the future land use map. Future development could include a variety of uses, including new and expansion of extractive uses. This extractive use was established on the property since the nineteen eighties. Third pattern of development, the future land use map identifies that the whole area within the lake shore development area. As stated in the comprehensive land use plan, the LDA is given flexibility necessary to allow for evolving nature of the rural economy, which includes allowances for businesses that are centered to the ability to live, work in rural areas that are allowed within the zone district. Other factors, this was requested to expand a permitted extractive use to include recycling of concrete and the tuminous only. Uh, the extractive use was reviewed by St. Louis County and meets all minimum extractive use standards. Friedenberg Township provided a letter dated November fourth, twenty-twenty-two, accepting all inspection reports of extractive uses within the township. Uh, there are wetlands located on the property. The previous approval predated the Wetland Conservation Act and it is recommended that wetland delineation be completed to ensure compliance with the Wetland Conservation Act. The next one is the questions that you guys have to review as part of your review of this case. And then recommendations, if the planning commission determines that expansion to allow, to allow for the tuminous and concrete, uh, that the condition precedent would be that they complete a wetland delineation. And then we have all of our conditions concern, our minimum standards be followed. Uh, local, state, and federal requirements be followed and the Wetland Conservation Act be followed. We received, that I know of right now, up until we got some information here, three correspondence, one from the township approving of the request. And then the two of the other ones, and I think you probably read them, are asking questions about, you know, the impact to the area. And one was asking for limited crushing hours. You should have them in your package. Yeah, I should end my presentation if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mark from the commission? Go ahead, Rick.
How old was the first condition, how long ago was that?
That was in the nineties.
Back in the eighties?
Yeah.
Mark, did you say they're already doing this?
They had it in their pits when we went and did an inspection and we noticed that in their previous approval, it didn't say concrete and tuminous, which happens, people bring it in for their work. And we told them if you want to continue to use it, you either you have to apply for an expansion to continue to use it or you have to remove it from the property. And they decided that they wanted to commit their expansion.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mark.
Mark, can you back up the other factors?
Sure.
There. Number three, what is, what's that all about? Friedenberg Township by the letter dated the fourth, accepting all inspection reports. We've, I've been here since two thousand and four, approximately, I have never seen anything like that. Was there, is that something that you do all the time?
No, it was a specific request that was asked of us to go out and review the borrow pits within Friedenberg Township. This being included is one of them. We provided information back on ones that were all in compliance and ones that weren't, if they had any two updates or anything like that. And that information was provided to Friedenberg Township and then they submitted this letter.
And when you say not in compliance, that's where you found the.
This one here.
We'll call it asphalt, blacktop.
Right, that was, I mean, we see this all the time, that in borrow pits that somebody might be doing something that they thought they could do without asking for a request. And that's why they're able to come to us and ask for those requests. And whether or not they get approved, we can't guarantee that. If not, then they would have to remove that material from the borrow.
Thank you.
Any further questions to Mark from the commission?
Look, I got a follow-up, follow-up that, Mark, not to put you on the spot here. But what did you find when you went through all their pits? And I take it there must be multiple pits.
Uh, well, I'm, I'm just looking at, this is the only one that we sent the letter to them basically saying that if you wanted to continue doing this, the rest of them that we have were in compliance for mental requirements.
Thank you.
Are there any government agencies here that wish to provide input on this proposal? Hang on. Is the applicant here? Put your stance, sir, and, and your name and address and tell us about your, your project, your proposal.
Uh, Steve Knessky, Lakehead Trucking, sixty-three-five Levate Road. And it is something like Mark said, we have done and think we're doing anything wrong. We were approached about the concrete, we took care of that right away. And then the blacktop, it comes in from deep the residents, whoever has blacktop driveways, we're cleaning them up or they're redoing them. Small amounts. A hundred yards, we get crushed up. We, whatever comes in that year gets crushed up. And it's gone, it's usually a waiting list to get it. We are, we were asked, you know, Mark said, to not do it anymore or buy for another, that part of the permit.
Any questions for Mr. Knessky from the commission? Go ahead, Mark.
Do you have any plans in the future, say hauling millings or anything like that in there? Because you're not gonna put a bash plant in here.
No.
So you wouldn't be hauling the millings in here, this is just like you say, small work job that you have.
Parking lot, driveways. It's no big commercial jobs, you know, like road jobs, something like that, never done that.
When you crush it, then you reprocess it, it's reprocessed class five or something like that?
Class five, yeah. It's usually gone within the sub. Pressure's there, we, you just throw the few hundred yards in there and crush it up and then it's gone.
Thank you. Mr. Knessky, I do have a question. Will the biocomets and concrete crushing?
We did do the concrete. We were informed how to do it, it had to be done in a timely process. It's too expensive and there's no market for recycled concrete in the business we do. Have been able to get rid of it, crushed it up into like a pit room size, which was acceptable to the county. You know, it could have been like class five or they have different classes it could have been. We went with the bigger rock. You use it as a subfill.
So you covered the concrete, you have.
The majority of it is, what had to be gone, most of it was sold over the winter. We do have a little pile left and I'm sure first subgrades or putting in driveways will use up the rest, you know. We do have a little pile left, and I'm sure for subgrades or putting in driveways, we'll use up the rest, you know, real soon. And that, we will, we don't even allow concrete anymore.
Okay, so you have no plans going forward to crush concrete?
Not concrete, no.
Just biocomets?
Just the blacktop.
Recycled asphalt?
That's, everybody likes the blacktop. Dust control works good.
Rick, you got a question?
And when you're crushing the bituminous, what's your average time? How many days are you crushing at a time? Just average? Or you're for all of our crushing? Every crushing, yeah. It's all like you're just doing it very periodically.
The crusher comes in and he's crushing up all our class five. And then we, they make the three quarter, you know, two other sizes of rock. And then we clean up our dump spot for the blacktop. They run it through, it could only be a couple hundred yards. Be on a safe side, say five hundred. It's not a very big pile and it's gone. Concrete and blacktop don't follow the same, that we knew of, the same brushing and getting rid of it timeframes with the blacktop. Crush it up in the spring, it's gone by. Everybody wants them.
Go ahead, Dan.
So in your application, you have a box checked for recycling of concrete, but then later on, you just say recycled asphalt for recycling. Did you mean to check the recycling of concrete box?
It was all in the same area.
So will you, you will have crushing concrete?
No concrete.
So I guess, you know, the box being checked.
You could add a condition that it wouldn't be if we feel that that's necessary.
Mr. Kaneski, I have another question. In, in the application, it mentions a home that's eighty feet from the, the hall road. Is that, is that, is that Greg Kaneski's house that I see on the?
Yeah, it's the old.
Okay.
It's actually the old part, the homestead.
And when you, when you, when you crush asphalt, I assume that's a quieter process than crushing concrete? Is that correct?
I would say so.
Okay. And you don't own the crusher, you just have it come in?
I don't.
Okay. How often does the crusher come in?
Well, you typically, once a year, unless you have a real busy year, they come in the fall and make sure that we have enough to keep in the winter. And they just shut down, you know, this year they ran week of deer hunting season. Got us.
Then we'll be back until later this year?
When, well, they just got us enough to get through the winter.
Okay.
Then we had the weather change. So kind of shut things down anyways. But they're, they're there and they will start up in probably May and make our big, normal pile.
How, how long will that take for the crusher to make that pile?
Oh, if no breakdowns, probably two weeks.
Okay, so that's, that's pretty much it, like a two week window in this construction season year? That there'd be a crusher in your pit?
Yep, and then they come back in the fall if we need to, you know, supplement the piles to make sure we get through the winter.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom. I can interject for my own. The crusher comes in to crush for your own use, the, the rock out of your pit after screening. Whether there's asphalt there or not to be crushed, the crusher is still there. You still bring it in. So it's just a sub job when he's in there, just run that crap through.
Yep, clean it up and.
And we also received some correspondence about a rumor, and, and I don't know how these things work, but that you were going to build another road, accessing another road, you know, across your property and someone else's property and, and address that.
I just want to thank all the people that called and asked what this was all about, this meeting. And that's what they heard. Going in off the township road, which we can't do in the first place. Came into effect with another pit. And, um, I don't know, everybody can interpret it different, but we're not, um, it's not an expansion, it's an update of our permit.
But, but in.
We are not, we are using all the same facility entrances, exits, and there's one.
And no new roads planned?
Nothing. The only place to come out would be onto a township road. If you can't use, then we have to run through. We'd have to go through a lot of permitting, I guess, to.
Sure.
I get it, but you can't go on the township roads anyways with the pit. That was a rumor. And a blacktop plant was a rumor too.
Chair Mackenzie?
Yes, yes.
So one, one more question with, you know, when we're talking about expansion, we're talking about expansion for that additional cycle stuff. You still expanding the pit this way, I mean, that's always. We're, we're just expanding for different uses.
Different uses, yes. The pits within its boundaries. Blacktop is brought in and that's just a little extra, but it doesn't affect.
And the pit has been, how long was it going to be?
Long time.
Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Can we have anybody online?
We, I believe we do. Let me check with Angie. She was creating a list for virtual, and I don't know if that's been updated yet. Angie, is there anyone that you're aware of that wishes to speak in favor of this proposal virtually?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Angie.
Are there persons present who wish to speak against him? And I will use my sign up sheet. Mr. Sitch, do you wish to? And be aware, there's a three minute.
My name is Clayton Sitch. I live at forty-nine fifty-five Estebay Drive. And I'm currently a board member for ten years on the Friedenburg Township. And I speak for myself and my community. The part of the application, or part of what the county wrote down, is about inspection. And it's inspection of the current operations within the township. The two pits that LTI actually do operate, particularly the Keever pit, there has been no inspection. We've been requesting inspections of that pit. And they are in violation, in my opinion, for many, many years. And also due to former planning and zoning director, Johnson told me they were too. So our problem is that they've been issued another permit, which is sixty-four sixty-four Friedenburg Lake Road. And now this one here, and they're not taking care of the problems that they have in the Keever pit. And I think you'll find it all is laid out right there and with the information that you got. So, and we've been attending board meetings, county board meetings in that regard, trying to get the county to actually inspect. They come in with what they call a visit. And the visit is, you go in, they go so far, they put one parcel number when there's numerous parcels. They don't even talk about them. I think you'll find the information in the packet of what's going on. There's been no remediation of their existing operation and have been a violation for a long, long time with the inspection done back in two thousand and eight. It's, it's not difficult to see this pit because the snow will trail all the way by. You can look into it. The walls are as steep as that wall line. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bonnie Anderson.
On August fourth, twenty twenty-two, a letter was sent to Todd Kaneski from the Director of Planning and Community Development, Matthew Johnson. It stated the following. The following items need to be addressed for your borrow pit to continue operation. During the site visit, staff indicated that stockpiling concrete and bituminous was not an approved activity as part of your conditional use permit. Removal of bituminous and concrete is required, or an application for expansion of the cup shall be submitted for the additional use. First, a site visit is not an inspection. There has not been an inspection of this borrow pit since two thousand and eight. Furthermore, only one parcel, this is only one parcel where there are several that comprise this borrow pit. Second, this new application for expansion, expansion is the result of yet another violation being committed by LTI. Nevertheless, rather than insisting the stockpiled material be removed, an implicable second choice was given to LTI to recycle this concrete and bituminous material per ordinance sixty-two dash eight point one point B and six point twenty-two point B four. No permit application will be accepted from landowners or their agents on property on which there are current or past unresolved violations of any St. Louis County ordinance unless St. Louis County determines that the permit is a part of resolving the previous violations. And no permits shall be issued to an operator owner who has not reclaimed a previously approved extractive use permit or is in violation of the condition of their permit. And finally, what assurance do we have that LTI will be compliant in this cup application for expansion? Or that St. Louis County will ensure ordinances and laws are being followed? LTI has shown little indication to follow the laws concerning extractive use and borrow pit mining. And St. Louis County has little inclination to enforce those laws. Rather than allowing increased opportunity for more violations and lax enforcement, the stockpiled concrete and bituminous product should be removed, not recycled. Thank you.
Bonnie, could I get your name and address?
Oh, I am sorry. Bonnie Anderson, forty-nine twenty-nine Fish Lake Road.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I may apologize to the speaker for my phone ringing. I have to carry it with me because I have a CGM. But my little fat finger doesn't always get that indicator shot.
As you noticed, I didn't, it didn't even make me pause.
I, I owe you an apology, and I owe this board an apology for that ringing. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
And next we have Bruce Anderson.
Bruce Anderson, forty-nine twenty-nine Fish Lake Road, Duluth. In the extractive use in your ordinance sixty-two, which I carry with me all the time, it's there. Permit required extractive use class two general purpose, number four. Crushing is allowed and shall be limited to the permitted timeline in which use was authorized. And on the number six, recycling of asphalt and concrete is allowed and shall be limited to the permitted timeline. I didn't see any timelines in the application, and I'm curious about timelines. St. Louis County is not following ordinance sixty-two, and there's a common theme this morning. You'll hear there's violations, LTI, there's violations, there's pit reclamation issued at the Keever pit. With that said, please follow ordinance sixty-two. If you follow ordinance sixty-two, this cup will be denied because of those violations. If you read in the same ordinance sixty-two, under six point two to extractive use performance, be general, number four. And this is, if you hear nothing else, please hear this. No permit shall be issued to an operator owner who has not reclaimed a previously approved extractive use or is in violation of the conditions of their permit. That in itself should say no to this cup application. There's violations now. What, what's going to stop because of the history of this? What's going to, how are we protected from future violation? We are not protected by St. Louis County. You are all of you. Because we are not protected, what are the plans to keep this eighty-five acre site running in good health? What are the plans? I, why am I not to think the violations went discontinued? What are the plans to keep this site in good health? Please follow ordinance sixty-two and say no to this cup application. Also, section one point three. Yes. One point three, under intent and purpose. It is a purpose of this ordinance to protect, preserve, and enhance the quality of the lakes, rivers, forests, wetlands, natural landforms, and open spaces in St. Louis County. How, how does this cup application support that?
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Next, we have Melissa Bell. And can we get your address, Melissa?
Yes, my name is Melissa Bell. My address is sixty-three eighty-two Keever, Heron Door. So I gave you guys much payers. And I think one thing you guys hear most of, it's from a Keever pit. That's the other operation that we is currently active with. I made a map, and one thing about this map talks about the ordinance for reclamation, where it measures concurrent. On non-working walls, it's supposed to require to be two to one ratio. And then upon completion, a three to one ratio. So I did some math, and it's not perfect math, but it's pretty close to where the property line is, to the fifty foot, fifty foot buffer zone. And let's say the walls are twenty feet high. I think that's a good average. So the blue line is what they have to get to get the forty feet out to reclaim at a two to one angle. There's lots of spots where you can see where they've actually crossed the no disturbance line. And this is an issue. And in the oh-eight inspection, they actually state, in the Keever pit, they say some of the walls are twenty feet high. And in the main pit, the working wall is twenty feet high. So these are not, it's not exaggerated type excavation. Also, we've had what inspections? Please ask for those inspections. That's part of the documents of inspections. I am more of a fact person. I like facts. So ask the county department for copies of the inspections that they did. If you look at the site visits that they, they wrote up, they were site visits. And there, we have four main pits in our area. Chris Oldner has a pit, has two parcels to it. Both those parcels were documented in the site visit letter. Jim Derby has dirt works. He has, I think, three parcels. All three of his were listed. But the lakehead pits with the Keever and the main only have their entry parcels listed. And they each, I think, the Keever has like four, five, I think, five parcels, and the main has like three or four. But only one parcel was for each. And then when I did a data request asking for that information, like what, what came up with these, you know, what was the conclusion of these inspections? They were like, oh, well, apparently the law does require us to have documented inspections, so we didn't document. How on earth is that going to be legal? I actually noticed in the, in the staff report at the top, there used to, there used to be an inspection date put there, so you would see the date of inspection. And I would ask, okay, I want, I got a request, I said, I want that, this date of the inspection. You said there was inspection this date. I want to see that date. Oh, well, it didn't really happen. How, how, so now if you notice, it's not even on there anymore. They took it off. All we've been ever asking is for the facts and truth and fairness. The permit at sixty-four sixty-four is, is kind of why we're here. But the Keever pit was a big part of that. Had that been known, that first permit would have been given. And now this permit, we haven't fixed it yet. We need to fix that first. Thank you for your time.
Ma'am?
Yes.
How did you get these?
How did you get these, make it? On site or?
Yeah, if you look at the bottom, there actually is a, is a, I don't know. It actually shows the sixty feet, like that sixty.
No, but I mean, how did you get?
Uh, the, the conularis bar.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else here that would, against the whole of it is not on the site of change? Two more names on the sheet.
I think we signed up.
Uh, yes, Janet and, and Ollie?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Uh, are you gonna go first?
I would love to. Well, I'm not staying here because I'd like to look at you guys. First of all, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Can we get your address, uh?
Oh, I'm sorry. So my name is Janet Olson. I live at forty-nine thirty-one Fish Lake. I've lived there over twenty years with my husband and family. Um, you know, I've always been kind of a little bit surprised that more of our neighbors don't show up because I know there's people that are upset about everything that's going on. Um, and I've heard some people say that they feel intimidated or they feel that there's going to be retaliation or threats made against them. Um, I know now what they are talking about. My husband and I were, um, celebrating Easter. This was on Easter evening when I was approached by the president of Lakehead Trucking. He stated to me, um, some things and I won't go into all the details. But it was a threatening tone. It was a tone to try to tell me to quit speaking and quit talking about it. Um, I won't go into all the details, but it wasn't, it wasn't a very nice conversation. It was, it was meant to intimidate my husband and myself. So I will not be bullied and I will not be threatened and I will continue to state the truth. Friedburg Township is a beautiful place to live with multiple lakes, wildlife, and tranquility. It is truly, um, a masterpiece, a beautiful place to live. All this will be destroyed if you guys keep rubber stamping the gravel pits and expanding them. You have been given the facts about the gravel pits not being in compliance. I would strongly urge you to vote no. Please don't destroy our community and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Ollie, you're next. Same address, I assume?
Yeah, key is still Friday this morning. So thank you. Yeah, Ollie Olson, forty-nine thirty-one Fish Lake Road, Friedburg Township. As Janet said, I live there with my beautiful bride and our wonderful doggy Oregon. And we get visited by half a dozen kids and a half a dozen grandkids. Quite a, it's a place of of great quiet. And that's why we, that's why we live there. It, it's a way of, it's a way of life, it's a standard of living that we have there. And it's, it's kind of being taken down because of planning commission and the board of commissioners. I don't know if they're just ignorant or what's going on. But it's time that you start doing inspections on the current gravel pits because the rules are the rules and you know what they are. If you didn't know what they were, we've stated them plenty of times. So it's time to make people accountable. Time that they get permission. Any company gives permission instead of letting things go on for many years and then say, we didn't know and ask for forgiveness. If you were, if, if you run into a conservation officer and you have seven wall eyes in your life and you, and you say, oh, I didn't know. Well, the conservation officer will say ignorance is not an excuse. You're getting a ticket and you're not going to be fishing for a long time. They didn't follow the rules. We could wipe out all the game and fish in the area. But they do follow the rule. And they hold people accountable to follow the rules. And we need to start doing this in this town. No more asking for forgiveness. Make sure the commission is granted ahead of time. I used to work for LTI. I hauled in many loads of asphalt and concrete into the spot that they're talking about, many of them. One of the, one of the biggest jobs was, uh, graymon in spirit. Hauled a lot of crap into that spot. And it's not pretty. I wish I wouldn't have done it. I wish I had refused to do it. Anyway, these, these, these pits are out of compliance. They're out of compliance, the ones that they're operating. And the rule is, you don't get it, get them expansion or another pit, another cup. If you're not following the rules with, with places that you have. So that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience which speaks against this proposal? Did you have any online callers?
You don't believe so. Not for this case anyways.
Correct, yeah. I'll close the hearing for public testimony. We have a motion, remember, for discussion.
Mark, do we do little inspections as opposed to site visits?
What we do is site visit. That, that line on the application that says inspection, this means that's when we go out to the site to review it, but it's not an inspection. So that, that was just taken off there because in winter time, you can only go in so far to look at it. And so in this case, it was, I went in as far as I could, but we did do a site review of this property and there was information that was provided that we went out there and that's how we found out that they had blacktop and bituminous on that piece of property. So again, the way the ordinance reads, there is that stipulation that says that it shall be in compliance with the last sentence on that one. Or can be brought into compliance by, uh,
applying for something that would have, bring it into compliance.
To bring it into compliance. And that's what they're requesting is if they want to continue to do this, to apply for an application. We can't say you can't apply. They had two options, either take it out or they could apply. And we're only looking at the tuminous today. That's the only thing that we're discussing in, in the request today or what they had on their application concrete. But it sounds like they don't want to do concrete.
Do, do we have an actual, it's not an inspection report, a report that could be shared with us, you know, for, for situations like this?
There's nothing in our ordinance that says every pit has to be inspected. Um, there are the ones, new ones now that we have. It says that we'll come back in five years and, you know, look at them. But on these old ones that were back in the eighties and nineties, which was permitted by Friedburg Township, there was nothing in the ordinance at that time that required it to be annual inspections by yearly inspections. So it usually was case by case. So in this, in this one here, again, when we went out there, we noted these issues and then a letter was written up about that. But there wasn't an actual inspection report that was filled out because of that, because it was not.
One, one more, do you agree? So with the McKeever pit, let's say the McKeever pit does have some sloping issues that are currently there. We grant this permit. And if you do a site visit, we get into the Keever pit and find that they're in violation of sloping issue. How this, this permit is granted because if these two be tied together?
I can attempt answer. So if there's a compliance issue that's revealed after a permit is issued, um, on a, on a property, then we would deal with that compliance issue at that time.
Sloping?
Yes. Um, it could be brought back in front of the planning commission for their consideration, whether or not to, let's say, um, revoke a, another permit based on that, um, review. But it would be at, you know, we would bring it back to you.
Thank you.
Janet, I have a question. If, for instance, uh, LTI has, let's say, ten pits and, uh, some of them are in compliance, some are not, but the ones that are in compliance, um, their, their permit applied for, uh, because in this instance, there was some concrete that they didn't have a, that their permit didn't permit. Does the violation in one pit extend to all their other pits as far as that, those permits go?
Those permits had already been granted, so we would deal with it on a pit by pit, compliance, compliance.
That's my question. So if it's a pit by pit basis, um, okay, thank you. And Mark, I have a question. Um, in this case, this pit at sixty-three five Leiby, not, which is not the Keever pit. Um, they're, they would otherwise have been in compliance except for the concrete and the bituminous, correct?
You are correct.
So, uh, by removing the concrete and getting a, uh, and getting permission from us to have asphalt trucking, they will now be on.
Correct, correct.
There are no other compliance issues and that's it?
Not that I know of at this time, no.
No, uh, no reclamation issue, nothing like that?
Well, I mean, that's like all pits, they're always concurrent, so they're always ongoing. So if you've ever been in a borrow pit, there's a lot of exposed banks because they're taking material out of them. So they will, as they work a face, if there is still good product there, there's always going to be an open face on a, in a borrow pit. Areas where they're no longer doing anything, then they should start re-sloping. In this case, there were some areas in their pit that there was some re-sloping being done and trees were growing. But in most cases, it's still a working face bank. And you're always going to see that when you go in a borrow pit.
And how long the reclamation standard, when would they first institute?
Well, the old ordinance that I had back in nineteen ninety-three basically had reclamation standards in it. Um, and then, uh, the county came up with their own reclamation standards and said, here's, here's ones you can use or they can come up with their own, but they have to meet those minimum standards. So I would say back, probably back since nineteen ninety-five or six, reclamation standards have been in place for, um, Saint Louis County. I don't know what Friedburg Township had for reclamation when they had permitting authority there.
But a pit abandoned or, uh, or not being used prior to reclamation standards wouldn't apply to that pit, correct? The, 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 the modern standard would not, would not, would not apply to a pit that had been abandoned many years ago, right?
Right. And if somebody went into it right now and said they want to start operating, then we would look at them coming up with, doing any reclamation that would need to be done if they weren't going to do that area and start a new area. But in this case, yeah, they, if it was permitted from another jurisdiction and it's abandoned, your, our ordinance isn't going to make somebody go back in there and reclaim it unless they're determining that they want to go back in and use it as a permission. Thank you.
Who? Listening to the speakers and, and whatnot, and you answered part of it. And Mark, so that, and I want to clarify to myself, the only rule right now LTI is in violation of is that blacktop.
You're correct. And the concrete that they have.
Concrete, he says was ruled.
It's all, it's all crushed and it went on to a lot of projects this winter.
It's crushed. Now it's a rock.
It's a pit run, grab, grab.
And then, so the time limits on that, the concrete are gone by. And we're talking the asphalt time limit that's already crushed and that'll be going, correct? Or is that rock, raw, blacktop?
Right, not make off your driveway?
Yeah.
Yep. Brought it in, they'll crush it up and there's a waiting list, but it'll be gone as fast as.
And I looked at this and I listened and I listened. And I was trying to find out, Mr. Chairman, where the harm occurred. What did they do wrong? Well, the blacktop and the cement, but did it harm anybody? Did it harm you or me or anyone? I don't know that. I don't believe it did. And seeing we don't do the board, the board doesn't do the inspections, as like, uh, one of the speakers said, you know, this board is not ignorant of the fact that sometimes there's violations. Inadvertent as they are, we all do them. And if we don't prep that inadvertent violation, then we run rampant. But that's what we're here for today is to prep that. By either granting or denying your question or the asphalt, and I'm going to say the cement too, because it, it gets mixed in there. I mean, I've got a cement driveway, but blacktop on top of it. If you go to take it out, you're getting both of them. So.
Just, just to clear, something like that, no, we would not accept.
Oh, okay. You want, you want clean.
To go to one of the other pits that are downtown.
So I guess that's, I'm more or less speaking to you, Mr. Chairman, and the board or the members. I'm trying to figure out where there was great harm done to anybody here and I don't see it. We've had great harm done before. We've had areas, not, I can't speak gravel pits, but damage to forestry is an illegal road that we've taken care of. So no, you can't do that. It's illegal. You better, you gotta put everything back together the way it was before, whether you have to plant or whatever. But this, I can't, I don't know, folks. I don't live out there. So I don't see what you're seeing about the blacktop. And I, I'm not being facetious either. Being, I lived on the edge of an open iron ore pit that ran twenty-four hours a day. I live right next to an airport that runs twenty-four hours a day. Would I wish the planes didn't fly? Yeah. Would I wish that open, that pit wasn't working? Yeah, but it's, it's part of life and I, I can't speak to your ground, but I'm just speaking to myself now. Oh, sure. And I don't know if I can do this.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
As for the ordinance, you said, why does the main pit impacting the Keever pit? Um, and the ordinance is, if the owner operator, so of any pit that the owner operated owns, he or she is not able to get a new permit if they're in violation in any of their locations. That's what it states in, uh, six point two two in the ordinance. Um, and also for inspections, uh, they are not required. That is correct. However, I did file formal complaints because I wasn't getting the answers that I wanted. Um, and I actually did, still did not get a, uh, an inspection back. Um, I just got a letter saying that Todd Kuneski said everything was okay, um, at the McKeever pit and they didn't, you know, viewed on the aerial and everything is good to go. Um, I don't believe any other category of the county permitting would, would allow the owner to say it's all good and, um, and be approved, especially on a, on a formal complaint. And I've given the evidence. Um, and, and so we're here not really about the main pit. We're here because the county needs to be held accountable to follow the rules for everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. The site, I understand there was a site visit that discovered the concrete and the blacktop. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that site visit was due to what?
We requested to go out and take a look at these borrow pits within Friedburg Township.
And that request came from?
That would be? Township.
Okay. And the remedy to this is it's been discovered and they can simply apply for a permit to make everything correct.
Or
Or Or
No longer have it.
Reject it and, uh, they continue as they are. The part of this that, that is interesting is this could be done for a long period of time without anybody, uh, doing anything about it. It was just, it, it had to be a forced site visit to discover what was going on. So that, this is the part that kind of gets me. This is like an after the fact, when we deal with a board of adjustment, after the fact variance. Oops, I got caught. I want to get a variance now to make it all good. Oops, I got caught. Now I want to make it good. That's, that's the way I'm looking. And I look at, uh, site inspections. I don't know. I, I have in front of me, uh, five, four, twenty-one main pit and, uh, McKeever pit. There's violations. Anything, uh, it done about these? Are you aware of these or?
That was handed out this morning.
That, that was.
We, so all of.
What are this?
For our knowledge at this point, there are no violations that are currently existing, other than making sure that this gets resolved on this kit. There is, um, information from others that counters that, but from the county's perspective, things are in compliance from the reviews that we've done. And the township received all of the information and letters indicating that and has accepted all of that as a township.
Accepted what?
That the pits are in compliance, other than this.
All of the pits.
There's a letter in our packet.
Okay. But what, what, what I was looking at is I see you go back to, uh, two thousand eight. And just how did, how does resolution come? Do you tell them that they must fix these things? Then you go back and inspect?
It would be, it would be like any other compliance issue. If there's an issue, we go, we review, we say these are the issues. We let that property owner know that there's issues. We work with them on compliance. Sometimes compliance does take a rather long time. Um, this case in particular, because we were waiting to see, okay, like, yeah, there was indication that they were going to come in for an expansion. And so they did. Um, and then like any other compliance case, you would go back, review, make sure that what was done was done or what was set was done was done.
And it's the same thing with this current one right now. You went in, you found something and the resolution is reject and continue things as they did or allow a new permit to do what you have.
Mr. Coon?
Mr. Chairman, repeat me again, and I don't want to sound repetitious, but it was stated before, and I think we're getting off track about other violations, not that, what you said is not wrong either. But what David brought up, yeah, there were violations, but we got a letter in our packet that says everything's taken care of. According to Friedenberg Township, its knowledge is all the active and inactive ground have been inspected by St. Louis County. And they passed it. We're here only talking about blacktop and concrete in a pit.
A pit at sixty-three-five Levee, correct?
And I think we should stay on that.
Yes. And I wasn't after what was going on in those others. I was trying to see how do you follow after a site visit? And that's what I was clarifying. I'm not trying to bring those in, okay? Did something, you noted it and then it was corrected. And that's what I'm seeing here now. I'm seeing the sequence of events.
Uh, Mark, when I did ask the applicant what, how she got her measurements, I just wanted to make sure she wasn't going on the property.
Again, that had, that would be an issue between her and the owner.
Right, but I wanted to ask you, how accurate, um, would these measurements be that she is taking off of our county land?
Depends on how, how, with the survey points, uh, it are available in that area. Sometimes they can be pretty accurate. Sometimes they can be way off without an official survey. Um, we can guarantee what, um, where the actual property lines are. So in this case, I can't tell you how accurate they are.
I just wanted to ask whatever. Thank you, Mark.
Mark, I think you mentioned at the past meeting that they're not survey grade. In other words, can't rely on them.
Yeah, the parcel layer is not survey grade. No, it is not.
Yes, Dave.
Okay, uh, we've allowed conversation back and forth, uh, to the board. So I have a question for this gentleman right here. You said you're a member of what board?
Friedenberg Township Board.
Okay. And you spoke as an individual.
Correct.
Just give me a quick rehash of what you said. Just real synopsis. I want to hear this.
Let me start.
Well, uh, you are having some difficulty with, uh, the situation that's going on.
Yes.
What are you looking for in resolution?
The resolution, uh, as I see it, uh, being a board member, is that we have never, I know the others, we had a, a three to two vote. We have no zoning authority. We denied even having zoning authority. So what we did, uh, as they had the vote about, they accepted the inspection, but there were no inspection. They inspected or had a site visits on the two other operating pits, uh, very extensive. And they filed a report and they had to do reclamation. One was the older pit and the other one was the Derby. And the older pit and the, uh, LTI pit share a lot. So on one side of the lot is a, is a very well-run operation and they spent fifteen thousand dollars with Northland Excavating to get their remediation right. The other side of the same lot line, which is LTI's pit, it's, nothing's been done. There's one parcel coat, the other ones have all their parcel coat as part of their site business. But, and it's, it's not a difficult thing to see looking into LTI, because the snowmobile trail goes right next to their pit. So you can see right in that the banks are very steep. They actually underdug the, uh, snowmobile trail, which hasn't eased across their property, given to them by Minnesota Power. It's, it's, it's not a difficult thing to see. And it's, if, if, if you're talking about working banks, then every bank in that pit is working. There's been no remediation. And if they take more soilite, they'll be into the, their adjacent pit owners and others. You can see by the, uh, it's not a survey grade, but I know one thing for sure. Melissa Bell, they used an aerial photograph to tell her that she had two feet onto her, leaned to on her, uh, on her garage and denied her, uh, permit. So it was good for two feet. This should be actually pretty appropriate. So what the, what the difficulty is that, you know, uh, we would like them to fix the other pit.
Any further questions or, um, any further discussion regarding, oh, any of the commission members? Dave?
Yeah, uh, when I was just listening, you're, what I view is when you're talking about this other, not talking, just you could request like was done before, site visit to that one to get that fixed. There's a remedy you'd request it. Okay. Jen, is that correct?
There's been a lot of requests. I'm not particularly sure which one this would be in reference to.
But any requests they made.
But any one we would look into, we would review as we would any other compliance issue and ensure compliance.
Okay. So that's the remedy to the old property.
Correct.
Do you have an issue with the present property?
The present property, um, other than the fact that, uh, the only question I have for the zoning board is, are we creating a eighty-plus acre industrial site in the town for any kind of use in the future?
That it is?
Yeah.
Is there anyone who's prepared to make a motion or proposal?
Well, I think the gentleman's question should be answered. And I don't think we're creating an eighty-acre industrial site by approving recycling the blacktop. That's just my opinion.
Not that it's your opinion, but are we?
I believe not.
We're not talking our age.
No.
We're talking the future.
Yes, I understand.
I'm seventy-six years old, so I mean, I don't have that much time on me.
You've got a lot left, because I've got a lot left and I'm only.
And I'm just saying, I got lots left.
I'd like to think so. But that's, that's a concern I have, uh, just because of the community and where it's going. We have, the LTI has a sixty-plus acre site on one side of Fish Lake. And now they will have this site, which they're going to, uh, they have on the other side of Fish Lake. If Fish Lake is a, is a, it's an upscale area with, it's five thousand acres. So, I mean, just those things have to be considered. And, uh, you know, that's all I can tell you is that, uh, I don't know if you know anything about Friedenberg. Friedenberg is, is the tenth highest taxpayer in the county. We have two hundred and seventy million, two hundred and thirty million dollars worth of taxable real estate. That doesn't look like sure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Can I just clarify one thing? You were calling it the old pit. Clay mentioned it's the older pit. The name of the folks that own that property is older. It's not an, it's not an old pit of LTI's.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah.
Do we have, um, anyone prepared to make a move?
Well, I see that this is a narrow issue. You've gotten on track talking about other pits, other places of the violations. It's a very narrow request to create a, a minor problem. The, the applicant's been cooperative, has done what needs to be done to come into compliance. And had did that, had done that before our hearing today.
Mr. Chairman, we'll make the motion based on staff recommendation.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
You put a discussion, many of the members? Jenny?
No discussion, but can we get the, um, criteria answered, please?
Sorry, what?
Can we get the criteria answered for one through four?
Yes. Uh, Commissioner?
The, per staff recommendations. The one through four. The answer to all of the one through four is that it is allowable for staff recommendation.
Do you want to add the condition about the concrete?
I, we already, that is not part of the proposal, as I recall. Although the box was checked, I certainly would be willing to accept that amendment to my motion. Commissioner Member Manick sees the need to.
I would, I would like to amend that, strike the concrete from the.
And I would accept that as a, as a, striking concrete from the application.
And that's, uh.
I have no problem with that. Just can we clarify if there's a chunk of concrete mixed with asphalt out of the curb or something? I don't want these guys getting in trouble, because I know how it works. I've, I've worked in the construction grades. I know how that works.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one comment. Uh, I am going to vote in favor of this, but I want these audience members to realize something. You have remedies to your situation by requesting site visits and looking at the things that you're concerned about.
Thank you. We've done horrible. Jenny, would you take the vote, please?
Commissioner Member Sato?
Support.
Chair McKenzie?
Support.
Commissioner Member Worshay?
Support.
Commissioner Member Pollak?
Support.
Commissioner Nelson?
Support.
Commissioner Member Manick?
Support.
Commissioner Member Coon?
Support.
Motion carries?
Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Joe, in minutes. Big Ben? Yes, yeah. What do you, what do you?
Even on the year, I was serving quite a heat on, I was taking another, I actually. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, I don't know. Might be a different, maybe a completely, and this one's more complex. I think I heard three, but I don't, like, why I'm trapped. Didn't say it, but I make it bad. You know, we do. I have a CGM thing. Okay. I can't, I didn't get to it. Not that, because I was carrying it. Risen against, but I, I like, when it happened, it's something, I always apologize. But I, and you see, you can't, I don't know. But with the CGM, you know. Why didn't you? I go down, didn't want to make a mistake. So then I end up, I can't sell it. But it's very, it's very, I just don't want to, yeah. It's even, but the same passes, yes. And so, so that has happened during, I mean, when I began the installation, because everything else just goes on. These are wonderful, I stand out entirely. And I intend to read my other things and, and I don't think. My next one is a little bit more than, I'm, I'm, oh, speaking. But that one's. Yeah. Okay. For your, for your. That's fine. I'd be part of those. I'd be part of those. One of these. One statement. You're too big. Right. Certainly. I think... It's hard to program it. I had trouble with that.
I am.
I, I, yeah. Biggest statements are made. I mean, like... This is...
What happened?
It says everything... I never was... You know, the last... I think you solved it. And from the process... It's torn.
Oh, you got screwed.
That's the process. Yeah.
You got sitting ball?
It's state of the... Yeah. And, and the order is... I am seeing, which one? Those lines are not that... No, not the... They're not... They're not. When you look at that county land explorer, it's not that...
Well, that's why I think, I think what else to compare. I wish it was better or better. And I want to make sure that everybody...
That's, that's what's on my mind, which is a great tool. That does not need that for either. I know people's houses that they're... And in this conversation with the young man, the other... One that you know from... It was, I really enjoyed it. Just some...
I'm in just the hallway again.
Oh. Now I'm... No, it's very exciting. I can see. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's...
No, but that...
Dating of shot.
Look, if I hadn't... I would skip the kids. Yeah. I would raise them. Right to the grandkids. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, legs only last so long.
You're not going to get any taller. You can, you can stand there if you want, but you're not going to get any... And the building...
So you would say that way?
Yeah.
Now, who can hold your coffee?
What's that?
Just like everything...
Please.
Please.
Oh, doing back order. Our next case is going to be Christine Wyrolic and her petition to use permit request for a zoning map amendment. And before I get started, or before we get started, I want to, we have a new crop of audience. I want to kind of explain our process here. And I know that you were given or had available to you this paper when you signed up when you came into the room. How we do things, process here is today, it's actually going to be truncated because there's a, there's a wrinkle in the process and it will point at. But then we need, the staff has not put a, a place proposal. Commission may or may or may not have questions. The applicant then has an opportunity to speak and then the public testimonial. And what we're going to do today is a limited testimony, the three minutes, we'll have a timer running. And obviously, we have a lot of interest here and there's a lot more interest than, than just people in the room, of course. And if, in the interest of brevity, if, if someone, if your neighbor or, or someone has the same opinion as you do, you can just stand up and say, I'm so and so from 4939 Raps Road and I, I echo what Mr. X, my neighbor, said. And we don't need, in other words, although we, we can take your testimony, we're, we're not going to tell you that you can't be. But in the interest of brevity, and we have a lot of emails, we've read them all, commission has seen them. And if you had an email sent and we, we, we read it and we know it, but you still have the ability to speak. So with that, I'm going to let Jenny speak. One more, Mr. Man.
Could I interrupt you for just a brief second? I just, I just wanted, for my board and the chair, I, I've heard at times somebody will volunteer information related to somebody applying. I'm not, I have no connection to the applicant, but in the documents, the correspondence, I have, I have a relative in law that is on the list of correspondence. And he made me testify, and I don't want to say I didn't testify, so I just want to be totally transparent. It's a debate anymore.
I saw that and I could...
Mr. Chair, I know a third of the people on this list.
I know some of them also.
Just qualify them right from the top.
I'm very comfortable with Mr. Manik, even though he has a, he's very upright. I don't think it can be swayed yet.
Thank you. So Jenny?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. So we do have this case before us for resoning. I did want to preface that there was an error in the applicant's notice, typographical error indicating that the meeting would be at 10:15 p.m., not 10:15 a.m. I was not made aware of that until this morning at seven, seven o'clock this morning, to which we responded it was a typographical error. There, the legal notice was accurate at 10:15 a.m. All the other notices were accurate at 10:15 a.m. The county website was accurate at 10:15 a.m. However, the applicant is requesting a continuance because they don't feel that they had enough time or that they were expecting that to be an evening meeting. I will say that the applicant has been before, even before, and has been made aware, you know, we, we hold our, our meetings in the mornings during the day. We haven't had an evening meeting since I have been with St. Louis County. However, had we been known, had it been known ahead of time that there was a typo in that notice, we would have, you know, reiterated, no, it's 10:15 a.m. So it'll be up to the planning commission here to decide if you would like to open it up and to, and to accept testimony and then not take action and continue it into the next month's hearing or not.
What, a.m. to p.m.? Are we just spinning our, if we were to open this up, are we spinning our wheels and everybody wasting their time legally?
No, because you can take testimony now because it's been legally noticed as, as a hearing that needs to be discussed or at least, you know, reviewed by you at some level. But taking action on it may not be the best advice to take if the applicant themselves has requested a continuance and/or is not available. There, I don't believe that the applicant is, is here.
So clarification, no motion to approve or disapprove would be feasible. So we are...
Commissioner, you have, Mr. Chair, my question is, this is, is this the first continuance we've been asked for in this hearing?
It was previously withdrawn.
So it was in front of us and then withdrawn?
Correct.
And this is the first continuance that's being asked?
It was withdrawn, not postponed, so there's a slight difference. If it's postponed, it would then, I think, be considered a continuance. Since it was withdrawn, there was no action and it was not heard.
Mr. Chair, in my opinion, and I'm probably going to be against legal advice, but in my opinion, we've legally noticed this meeting. The applicant has the opportunity to be present at this meeting, if not in person, online, listening in or whatever. All of these individuals came here today to give testimony, expecting us to make a decision along with it. That's where I'm at.
So again, with the 10:15, that's so absurd, even think that would be meeting at 10:15? Nobody in their right mind would even consider that. We would, you have to understand that's, that's just a clerical error. I would hope that the applicant is at least online right now, expecting, I, I may be following Commissioner Nelson's throwing cotton to win and watch my language. I'm not, I'm not trying to say we're, we're, we're not afraid of a legal challenge or something, but Jesus Christ. And even... The problem, the problem is, and I am worried about legal, and all my years of union, I've been a quarter of a time over a dot in the wrong spot. I would just go ahead with the hearing, Chair.
I, I agree with the two gentlemen. At what point do we put the applicant that is asking for something responsible? If you're asking to have a meeting and you see that there might be something wrong, or shouldn't you keep track of what you're doing? If this is your request, this isn't St. Louis County's obligation to do everything to make it convenient for her. He needs to take responsibility if this is what she is planning on doing. She could have made a simple phone call, sent an email. We've already convened one time for her and then she withdrew. And I know there was a gentleman here last month that took time out of his day to come here. So I mean, where do we put the responsibility on the applicant? I'm not going to take responsibility for it. I'm here, it was in my packet, and I think we should continue.
Mr. Pollak, you have...
I, I agree with the others. I think this is a bit secedious. I think that's history. Let's do it.
Yes, Mr. Cole.
Jenny, the letter to the applicant had, that's where the PM was, because our package says all, a.m., everybody else said a.m., I'm sure.
I was the only one that had PM and I can't explain it away.
I mean, it happens.
An error.
I have a sticker on my locker, you know what it was, SS, then it's gone, that's what, it happens.
She is not, she's indicated that she would not be in attendance because it was, no, it was her...
Can we at least do the testimony?
Well, at the very least, we would not make these people have a waste of time, I mean, at the very least. So I guess I find myself in favor of the position that the commissioner and others have taken also to proceed with the hearing and let things proceed as they must.
Okay, and we'll be in.
Mr. Chairman, but we cannot take any action.
It'll be up to the planning commission at the conclusion during your session.
Right, we could, we could make that decision after.
Thank you.
Chair, I just have one more question on that letter. The actual copy that we sent, we have a copy of that, and that error was made.
It was made and it was noted just this morning. It was something that we didn't see, that, that wasn't made aware to us until this morning.
Well, we're being comfortable.
Mr. Chair, I...
Yes.
I think we should at the very end of the hearing, listen to anything. And if the applicant wishes to come back before we make a decision, give that applicant an opportunity to come back. To, to give their... We should listen to the folks that are here absolutely. This is, I just want to note, it's not the only time we've dealt with this applicant with similar types of issues. I'm sorry, I have to say that out loud, as an elected official, I kind of get by with it, okay? The fact of the matter is, is this is a track record that I'm watching as well, which concerns me because it costs money to hold these meetings and because all of the people might come to these meetings. I don't think it's very respectful of, of other members of this county, for other landowners.
I think, and I'm sure other members think that, we should, we should have her hearing and do everything but make the decision and then give her a chance to come forward next month perhaps or whenever. But at least we'll have done what we can do so far, and that includes not inconveniencing people.
Right. Chairman, I hear what you're saying, but I respectfully disagree with you. We won't think Pandora's box, I think, but having her here and just because we hold testimony and we have a video and an audio record of it and everything else, you know, but the law, she has a right to confront. And we'll do whatever the board wants to do, but I just, I want it knowing that. Go ahead, Jenny.
I will just say that the planning commission in the past has made decisions when applicants have not been present.
Oh, sure.
So that's not a new precedent that would be set if that were to take place. But this is something different than situations like that, but you have heard cases where an applicant just has not shown up for the hearing.
Right. But the times where the correct time major still got upon themselves, not the...
Yes, correct. That's the only...
They don't have it a little quick and say, I don't know, we said 411. Like I, but Jenny, so with, so with the 10:15, she's, because she got a letter saying 10:15, that's the reason she's asking for more time just because a letter said 10:15? Or if it had said 10:15 a.m., must she still would have...
I believe it has nothing to do with the 10:15 p.m. because she indicated that the porters of her proposal were prepared to be at a 10:15 p.m. meeting.
Oh, we have a break.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We, we have enough legal issues going on in the world. I, I'm inclined now to agree with Commissioner Manik. And, and I feel awful to say this, but the county made a mistake. And, and this lands in a court of law, chances are that we're going to get called on carpet for the mistake that we made. And I actually kind of think that this individual would like to have a, a lawsuit. And that's why this action is being taken, so we want to give her that opportunity. Mr. Chair, I, I would move that we, we continue the hearing as per applicant's request.
A second.
Duncan?
Just one thing, if Tom Stanley is listening, if he...
Tom Stanley, our attorney. Oh, okay, for the board.
Is Tom listening?
He is not available right at the moment, no.
We're airing in the side of caution.
I know, I know.
Okay.
I can say I'm sorry in five different languages, that would be this open enough. That's the fact that we're confronted, but I think...
Jen? How, how does this work? How many times can this be just postponed, continued?
So in the past, in, in similar scenarios, the commission has said to an applicant that's done this before, this will be the last time that we will hear it and it will be on this date and at this time.
Is that what we did the last time?
Yes.
Let's do it this time.
Thank you. Done. So Jenny, expanding on that, then that is just for a particular case. At what point, when you have multiple cases that keep getting delayed, you know, can we get a legal opinion? And I, and I'm just saying, how we might be that we will never let this person apply again. I mean, I know we... We do stop with the bullshit.
I don't know that I can answer that question.
But we can act on this motion and then can we make a motion that this is, that it has to be heard next month?
Commissioner, Commissioner Members, I, I think that we, we in the past have always accepted every application as an individual application. We have to continue to do that. And, and even though individuals might have issues with previous applications, I, I try not to let that cloud my opinion, although sometimes it does, okay? But the fact of the matter is, is we're stuck in a spot right now that, that if we, if we move on, I know how many years... I know how many years Mr. Coombe did labor negotiations, and I know how scrutinized those are. And I just respect his opinion on this to the point that it is time for us to move on and allow the same process to go forward. I would ask that in the future, in scheduling this individual's hearings, that it would be the first hearing on that date, so that we have a time specific that they are, that, because sometimes we run over on previous meetings, sometimes. I would like, I would like them to be the first meeting, and that's just a request with the planning department, that they would be the first meeting coming up, or the first case to come on the next meeting.
Thanks.
Actually, let me interrupt you. I like this, I think it should be the last because of, but if somebody has a tendency to not show, we could all go home. We've had it before. We've had an applicant being first, and we're sitting here for two hours because we're allowing time for lengthy conversation, and then nothing happens.
And I believe previously, when a situation like this has come up, you have requested for them to be last on the agenda.
I got... But I see Commissioner Nelson's...
Mr. Chair, I'm doing it out of respect for everyone else who wants to come. If we have a time specific, then I don't have, and Commissioner Member Manick, I respect your time as well, but the fact of the matter is, is I'd much sooner have you sitting here for an hour not doing anything than have all of them sitting here for an hour not doing anything. So that's why I made that request as if it be the worst one. Certainly, if this board doesn't agree with that, it's not part of the motion. It's not part of the motion, okay? The motion was to continue.
Right, and I knew we had the... When Roger was chair, we, I think with the same person, we discussed the fact that this would be the last case because of the inevitable delay. So Jenny?
I think we could still do time specific. We can't, we can say it would be, it could begin at that time. If it begins later because of other cases, that's the only thing that could happen. I will say for the May hearing, which is what I'm hearing you would want this to be on the agenda for, we have two planning commission cases that...
And I understand, I mean, I'm assuming that you scheduled for KGM the first one today because it was likely to be a non-controversial application, correct? Get that on...
Try to do that, we can. We just never know what might happen, I guess.
It looked kind of strategic to me, so... Dave, you had...
Yes. You had mentioned about it cannot be tied into another case. Commissioner. What we're talking about is this individual case. Can we, Jen, say, what was, how did we put it? When we say that this has to happen, there was, it was, what did you mention? That we can say this is final opportunity? You had, how did you put it? When we did it the last time to an individual...
One more, one more.
I believe you indicated that the next hearing would be the last time that they would be able to come forward with a proposal, or same request in front of you. Not saying any proposal, but just this particular proposal would be the last time.
Yes, I want that somehow to happen. We'll take care of this first thing first, but we got to get it so it's pinned down, and we know that it's... Yeah.
Because if we say it's going to be at 10:30, and another meeting carries on, well, then she'll go and say, "My meeting was at 10:30?"
No, our notices indicate, sorry. Our notices indicate that it may begin after, but it would not begin prior. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I want to make sure with this withdrawal, with this continuance, we're not in any way violating the 60 days for her automatic to get...
She has requested it, so no, we are not.
Okay, so we have that in writing in the request.
In writing that she, it says, "Miss Wyrobit requests that the planning commission take no action on the application without her presence."
So, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make certain of that, okay?
And she's... Down by, without her presence.
Again.
Yes.
The clock is ticking. Okay, so we have your motion. Can you state your motion again? The motion is to continue the hearing to the next planning, next scheduled planning commission...
Next scheduled meeting.
Or rescheduled planning commission meeting.
Mr. Coombe has a second?
Definitely.
May I, at the request of the applicant?
At the request of the applicant, yes, that was, I had...
Part of the motion.
Part of the motion.
Any further discussion from any planning commission member?
Do we have to add the part that we want this is the last? Or can it have to be separate?
Do we do that separate?
You don't have to. Staff is aware, looking at the schedule, which we usually discuss at the conclusion of your public hearing. It looks to be that we could schedule that for 10:00 a.m. on May 11. So we will work on that schedule like we do when we, you know, talk about it every month, what the following month's meeting might look like. But that's anticipated, we've anticipated.
Please call the language.
Further discussion, fellow questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of us? Motion carries, Commissioner Nelson's motion carries.
What do I have to do? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, before we leave, there's some questions from the audience. If we can answer, because we don't want to step on...
There won't be a question.
Well, my first question is, to those people present, who sent an email? Raise your hand. Okay, we've got those emails. We've read them, we have them. So, you know, rest assured that we have your input.
And Mr. Chair, I would not want to hear any verbal testimony. We are going to yawn and putting ourselves in a very, very... It's an interesting position we're putting ourselves in. And I, trying to respect everybody who's here, I still don't want to take any verbal testimony. I would ask that if you have additional comments before you leave, we'll provide you with a paper, and write your questions down. They will become part of the record. We'll go through there.
The only question I have is the names that we all signed in. That will go into a record somewhere so they know who's here today.
Correct.
To the applicant.
That is, that is part of the record.
And the 56 that automatically would be on WebEx right now.
Additionally, all the correspondence that was received for the March hearing was provided to the planning commission already. So everything has been furnished to you.
We'll look into provided against the May hearing.
Yep.
Automatically, we don't need to request it.
You don't have to resubmit it.
Thank you. That would be a very good point to put me to put in. As a clerk, I don't, you already made a motion.
The motion is passed already, but I would assume that all information would carry forward.
It's not a clear assumption. It's been submitted, and it carries forward. Let's get it documented.
Now, how about the petition too, on the EAW?
All information presented carries forward.
Beautiful.
Please don't put us in a position of making more testimony today.
Per...
I just want to say I was here last month. I will be here again next month.
Yep, you were.
I'm glad, I'm glad you're doing it so that she's got no way to take this to court because something wasn't done right.
Great point. Thanks, Jenny. Hi, I'm here.
Are you closed hearing?
Martin, you're a juror. I still have comments to make. This next hearing, there was some... David, we're not in a... It's not anymore. Are we done? You can read it, that's what we're... We're done. We did that thing.